So if it rise and we're going to be led in with today's invocation by Pastor Darryl Holden from Community Bible Church.
Thank you, please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedom we have to govern ourselves, to gather, to speak openly with each other, and to pursue what is best. We don't take that for granted, and we recognize that so many have sacrificed for us to enjoy this freedom. We thank you for the people who invest their time and energy into making our community a good place to live. This is important work, and it impacts so many people, and they're doing a good job, and we affirm them in this. As this meeting begins tonight, we ask that you would have your hand of blessing in favor on those who are here. We pray that they would be able to communicate with each other clearly, so that different opinions and ideas are heard and understood. We pray for wisdom and decision-making so that what happens in this room tonight results in what is best for our community, and we pray that our community would continue to be a good, healthy place. And I pray that when this meeting is adjourned tonight, each person who has participated would feel your favor and your pleasure because they've given of themselves for the well-being of others, and we know that that is good in your sight. And we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
So if you remain standing, we're going to be led in a pledge allegiance by Heartland High School's American Sign Language students and Cub Scout Pack 384 from Creekside Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Please say thank you.
At this time, can I make a motion to have Larry, our Clerk Hopkins, run the meeting?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the clerk to run the meeting. Now, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move to approve the meeting agenda.
Wait, can we just ask the treasurer to take the role?
Sure. Trusty Harper?
Here.
Trusty Petrucci?
Here.
Clerk Hopkins?
Here.
Supervisor Fountain's absent. Treasurer Horning here. Trusty Colani?
Here.
And Trusty Jermaine is absent. We have quorum.
Thank you very much. Next up is approval of the meeting agenda.
I'll make that motion, support.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the meeting agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up is call to the public. Anybody can call the public.
Either one, David. I got received your newsletter, really interesting, but it doesn't do very much for anybody in Heartland Township. What we need is, we're going to need some representation that'll take our roads conditions to the county. It is the county that does all the roads in the township. Unless we get in there and argue with those people and find out why we don't get some money in return for our roads, we're never going to get them fixed. Now, I've been in there and I've talked to people at MDOT, I've talked to the county board of directors, they all have the same story. They don't have any money. I think we sent them a pretty good share of our money because you people are operating with a lot less than what they get and do a good job. So I think it's high time they kicked a little bit of that money back this way. Now, we've got to get somebody in there to talk that has some authority. They won't listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in call the public? Okay, with that, we're on to the next item, approval of the consent agenda. Son, Lou?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have no penny business, next is new business, and we have a resolution for adopting ordinance number seventy-six dash three amendment to the zoning ordinance. So I guess that's kind of me as well.
Oh, okay.
So these are the next ten or so amendments to the clear zoning ordinance that were identified by Birchler Arroyo when they did the clear zoning ordinance for us. There's basically a group of thirty of them. We did the first ten a couple months ago. These are the next ten. They were at the Planning Commission meeting and received a recommendation for approval on September twenty-sixth, and they're before you now for your pleasure.
You think it might be, I think this is another opportunity to kind of play up our movement towards clear zoning and our zoning ordinance, which is accessible online and a very instrumental tool for residents and developers and business folks who undertake work in the township utilizing our zoning ordinance. Perhaps you could explain that and why this is important, these amendments are to update that. Is that correct? Because these would get sent over to a company that would reinsert those into the clear zoning program?
Right. So as you recall, back roughly a year ago, we adopted new zoning ordinance. It basically took our old zoning ordinance and it put it into a new format that was a lot more computer-friendly, electronic-friendly. And when they did that, they also provided us a checkup, and they identified several items within the zoning ordinance that were either redundant or said one thing in one portion of the ordinance and something different in another. They gave us a punch list, and as part of the planning department's work plan for this year, they were tackling the first thirty of those. I forget exactly how many in total there were. Thirty is not all of the ones that were referenced by Birchler and Arroyo. Once we adopt these, we'll then submit them at some point in time to Birchler and Arroyo to update the format. The new zoning ordinance is filled with a lot of electronic links, and so they'll have to go back in and reformat the pages, and we're waiting until we have all these done before we do that. Presently, these will be up on our website so people can still find these, they just won't be incorporated into the clear zoning document right now. Is that accurate? And so, as you see, most of these things are just either because of the change in the way business is done, or some of the rules and regulations that we had were outdated. These changes became beneficial to incorporate into the zoning ordinance.
I'll make a motion to offer the resolution adopting ordinance number seventy-six dash three, A through K amendment to ordinance number seventy-six, Heartland Township zoning ordinance, amendment to multiple sections of the Heartland Township zoning ordinance. Support.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If I could have the treasurer, please call the role.
Trusty Colani?
Yes.
Trusty Harper?
Yes.
Trusty Petrucci?
Yes.
Clerk Hopkins?
Yes.
And Treasurer Horning is a yes. Pass.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number seventy-seven, fire prevention ordinance. I'll just give a brief one on this, and then I'm going to be turning it over to the fire marshal. This was at the Planning Commission at their last meeting in early November, and as I say, the best person to speak about this is the fire marshal, Mike Bernard.
Yes, good evening. How is everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Good, good. What I have before you is a proposed fire prevention ordinance that I'm looking for approval for Heartland Township. In addition, I have submitted the same fire prevention ordinance to Deerfield Township. And basically, just to give you a little bit of background, departments all over the United States, large and small, periodically go through and they update their codes, if you will, depending on the state that they're in or how they are set up. Currently, we are set up as a fire authority, which obviously means that we have representation from Heartland Township and Deerfield Township, and that makes up the Fire Authority Board that governs the fire department. So what I did is I took the last ordinance that we have been using, or the last set of guidelines that we've been using, and just basically updated them, made them current. Just to give you an idea, we were using NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Association, as well as the International Fire Code, set up by the International Code Council. And those were two, year 2000 for NFPA, one and one oh one, which is the, excuse me, Uniform Fire Code and the Life Safety Code. And then for the International Fire Code, we were using 2003. Well, basically, ten to twelve years have passed, and I felt it was time to update a few things. More importantly, because the IFC, the International Fire Code, and the NFPA, the code cycles run on the same year. So to me, it just sounded easy, easier for developers, hey, we use 2012 edition for Some of the changes that they make are in egress requirements for assembly occupancies. There's a handful of, just basically as technology has changed, the codes have changed. There's a lot of things that I could sit here and bore you with tonight, but I definitely won't do that. And then within that ordinance, so basically, kind of how it happens is a municipality or a township or a governing body adopts a set of codes. And by adopting NFPA one, one oh one, and the International Fire Code, you're adopting all of those codes by reference, okay? If that makes sense to you. And so by adopting those by reference, it gives you the opportunity to throw in a few tweaks that are pertinent to this area, okay? Things that are maybe unique for your community. For example, we still require sprinkler systems. That's NFPA thirteen, okay? When we design sprinkler system, when a designer comes in, they design them to NFPA thirteen. But by adopting this ordinance, that's like saying, hey, yep, we have a sprinkler system coming in, but the outside connection to the building has to be a five-inch storage fitting, okay? It's just little things like that, because that's what we use for our fire department, to connect to a building, to a sprinkler system. So it's a lot of those little things that are in a fire prevention ordinance that kind of covers that as a huge umbrella. Then you have the opportunity to throw in a couple of things, like lock boxes, for example. It's a key box that goes on the outside of a commercial building, so that way, in the event of a fire alarm, or let's say it's a strip mall, and they have a fire at one portion of the building, and we want to check for extension, we don't have to wait for a key holder. Or we don't have to do that second guess, you know what, should we, do we really have to break down that door or break through that window, which is going to cost that business not only the money to replace that window or door, but it's now it's going to be boarded up, it has to be secured, yada, yada, yada. So we have this little box that only the fire department has a key to. Put our key in it, we open it up, and it has a master key to those set of locks for that type of business.
Mike, a next point.
Yes.
How expensive are those to add to buildings that are already existing?
The basic one that I require, there's, it ranges, let me see, I wrote that down here, it ranges from a hundred and forty-seven dollars, that's the most common lock box that I require, and that fits one to three keys. And then the largest box that they have, which is like four inches by, four inches by five and a half inches, that's two hundred and seventy-five dollars. But that also has like a dead man switch on the inside that will connect to a fire alarm system or burglar alarm system, okay? So that is just other ways for, like banks do that, okay? So that way, if we go into a bank, it's usually tied into their alarm system, so they know that the fire department has gained access.
And then how easy is it, you know, because I know in the new buildings, how they're built in, it looks nice, but you're putting on one existing, how easy is it to like pry off or open or somebody else to vandalize it and get in?
Well, basically, once they're mounted to a building, yes, you could pry the whole unit off, but the way it works is it's a box, and then the plate inserts inside the box, and then when you lock it, these two things go like that. And it's a completely enclosed on all six sides. So yes, you can get it off the building, maybe with a vehicle and, you know, a truck, but to get into it, you're better off just breaking into the building with a, through the glass or something.
So in your ordinance, are you asking mandatory, or are you asking existing people to do it?
I'm asking for all existing and new businesses to do so. Basically, we're at about just over fifty percent of our businesses in Heartland have those boxes. And by doing that, I don't really look at it as an expense, that much of an expense, because let's say we went ahead and passed this, and all of a sudden, the ordinance became in effect in January. I'm not going to go in and say, you need to have this, and you need to have it right now. I do annual inspections and through attrition and going through, I would basically notify the businesses and say, hey, you know what, we do have the ordinance, we do require you to have a lock box, but I'm going to give you twelve months to do it, I'm going to give you to 2015 to have it. And when you break it down, I mean, a hundred and forty-seven dollars over a twelve-month period for that small box is twelve dollars and twenty-five cents a month to save up. And I realize the value of a dollar, and I know that, you know, a hundred and fifty bucks, it can make a difference in a small business owner's pocket at the end of the month, and, you know, I pride myself, and our department prides in ourselves, by working with our community and our business owners.
Can I just point out something?
Yes, sir.
But just rest assured that if the fire department needs to get into that building, they're going to get into that building, they're going to break their way into it if they have to, and it's going to cost the business owner a heck of a lot more to replace the door and whatever they need to get in the inside if there's a fire or something that they have to get in. So if you balance those two costs out, it's a heck of a lot cheaper to go with the box.
Hopefully, nobody ever needs to use that, you know. That's why I buy insurance, I hope I never ever going to use it.
Right. And believe it or not, I mean, and I know there could be a lot of people watching, they do offer a residential box too, and we do have a couple of people within the community that they do, because they are handicapped in some way or form, that they can't get to the door always. And they do have a lock box on their door. But we've had four instances. Unfortunately, when we do our electronic tracking, we don't have a little box that we check to say if we broke down a door, you know what I mean? So just kind of brainstorming here, we've had four instances that immediately came to mind, were businesses where we had to break down a door, break a window, and that was two salons, a retail store, and one business office. And I can guarantee you, I know for a fact that two, possibly three, almost the next day called me up and said, hey, can I get one of those boxes? Because it's that much of a detriment on their business.
Around this topic, Supervisor Fountain asked me to ask you a question. So your keys that you have to get into these lock boxes, and I know you spoke about this a little bit at the Planning Commission, you have one, the chief has one, there's ones in the vehicles as well, is that?
Yes, there's one on each first due, what we call first due apparatus. Basically, each one of our three engines, actually, four of our engines have the lock box key in it. And basically, you know those realtor, you punch in the code when you go to look at a home? We have that box mounted inside of the trucks. Only the officers have the code to get into that box to get to the super key, so that way you don't have any type of a new hire or somebody that's running around the township that has a, basically, a key to the township. So we do control it, we do take inventory on those keys, minimum of once a year, and if they are lost, we do replace those cores. We've never had to because we keep a tight, tight control on who has those keys, and we have a specific key. It's not like you can take one from Heartland and go over to Houll. It doesn't work that way.
That was a good question.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way. It's a specific key for this township, it's a special key code.
Well, I do, I did look through the final draft, and I know you addressed the issues that the Planning Commission had brought up.
And I do appreciate those comments, by the way, at the Planning Commission. That was very helpful.
All right, I'll move resolution adopting ordinance number seventy-seven, an ordinance adopting the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code, the 2012 edition of the NFPA one Fire Prevention Code, and the 2012 edition of the NFPA one oh one Life Safety Code, regulating and governing the safeguarding of life and property from fire and explosion hazards arising from the storage, handling, and use of hazardous substances, materials, and devices, and from conditions of hazardous to life and property in the occupancy of buildings and premises of the township of Heartland, provided for the issuance of permits for hazardous use for operations.
Would you like to restate that, huh? So we have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number seventy-seven, the fire prevention ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I would ask Treasurer to call the role.
Trusty Colani?
Yes.
Trusty Harper?
Yes.
Trusty Petrucci?
Yes.
Clerk Hopkins?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next on the agenda is board reports, and we'll kick that off with Trusty Colani.
I have no report tonight.
Treasurer Horning.
Just, everybody should have their tax bill. They went out last week, and if you haven't gotten it, give our office a call.
I have no report tonight. Trusty Petrucci?
I just want to inform the board that the Fire Authority is putting together their 2014 budget. We'll be submitting draft budget to the township by the thirty-first, which we need to do. Just wanted to bring you up to date on that. We are in process now.
Thank you. Trusty Harper?
No report.
Okay. Next on the agenda is managers' report.
Thank you, Clerk Hopkins. Just a couple of highlights from the operational reports, reminders on some upcoming meetings. Tomorrow night, we do have our Safe Roads and Pathways Task Force meeting, our second meeting with that group, and got a full agenda to go through there. As a reminder, we do have a special board meeting next Tuesday, the tenth, at six P.M. to catch up on a couple of items. And we have, Township Hall will be closing early next Thursday, the twelfth, at four o'clock for the staff holiday gathering, and there's more details in email for you. Other highlights, we're still tackling strategic plan. You'll be getting something back from us within the month. Along with that, looking at performance goals for 2014, and of course, the budget. We'll be starting the first of the year, our discussions with the board the first of the year. Just wanted to call out very briefly the status of the MS four. As you may recall, we did, you know, attempt to appeal again, our status as having a stormwater system that requires this silliness, and DQ denied that. The attorney we were working with has transitioned into a new position, so we made the call to just go ahead and file the permit for this year, and we can, we'll have some more conversation with the board about where to go from here, and whether we want to continue haggling over that. And I'm not looking to have that conversation now, I just wanted to give you a preview of that, that for now, we're just kind of being done with it for this year. We'll revisit it again next year and look for a board discussion on that. I think those are the main highlights. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, so anyone have any questions for Andrew Wickman? If not, we'll go to our next item, informational discussion, branding and website concept, and give this back to James.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Want to come forward, I'll just briefly introduce kind of what our goal is for tonight, and let the speaker introduce himself as well. A big thank you, you know, first of all, of course, for the township and this board for undertaking this project. It's one that's garnered support from our community partners that we are hoping, with the schools, the Chamber of Commerce, with the library, with other interest groups that have been involved in the process. All said, you know, there's more than a hundred individuals that have contributed along the way, and want to thank certainly Curtis Jackson, our consultant, and he'll introduce himself here in a moment. Of course, Colleen Russell, our communications director. We've also, we'll be working with some of our students from the DECA program at the high school, and they're not here this evening, or that we know of, but a special thank you to them. We look forward to making an educational component too, as we partner with the schools on this branding concept. Again, this is a branding for the Heartland community. It's not for the township, it's not for the schools, not for businesses per se, it's for the intangible, what you would call the Heartland community, and for the most part, that probably follows a school district boundary. Those people who associate themselves with, Heartland is my hometown, and maybe probably because, you know, my kids went to school there, I went to school there, and that's the community. We, of course, know that that goes across, you know, six different townships and seven different zip codes and three different area codes, but, so there's not really a clear boundary for it, but it's a promotion, a regional promotion of what the Heartland community has to offer, trying to capture in a word, a picture, so that we have something to rally around, something to message. And so we've, working with all of those folks, we've sort of narrowed it down to a couple of concepts that we're going to look at tonight, one in particular that seems to have garnered the most support, and so we're looking for feedback. This is another focus group, if you will, of your thoughts. And with that, I'll turn it over to Curtis, if you can introduce yourself, please.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. Good evening, everyone. My name is Curtis Jackson, president of Digital Alliance from Birmingham, and as Manager Wickman pointed out, this is a summary presentation of our efforts to develop a unified and cohesive brand, brand awareness package for Heartland community at large, and develop sort of a marketing vehicle that all of the township partners can get behind and use to support their individual marketing efforts. As you mentioned, this is sort of a presentation of where we're at to date. We're about ninety percent We're about 90% there. We've narrowed it to a couple of finalists in terms of our tagline and positioning, as well as a couple of logo options. So with that, our overall purpose, as was just discussed, is to create a distinctive and unique compelling brand identity that positions Heartland as a desirable part of Livingston County. And then what we're going to do is then articulate that brand through a variety of marketing tactics, including a new website for the township, a website that acts more as a portal to all of the individual partners, and the logo and tagline that will be used to support those marketing efforts. So the first part of our process was really to look at what is the competitive landscape in southeast Michigan, specific to Livingston County and as well as outside of the county, to get a feel for what other communities are saying about themselves and how they're positioning themselves in terms of whether it's a brand, or whether it's a DDA effort, just to get a benchmark for design and positioning. First part of that was to look at each of the individual community's websites, and those are the websites for the municipalities or the cities themselves. So starting with Heartland's on the left there that you can see, that everybody's familiar with, moving across from Brighton and Howell, as far east as Novi, and then we've got Milford, and then further south, looking at Northville and Ann Arbor. And you can see collectively, they're pretty much, all pretty much the same, they're very, very busy and content heavy. So part of our challenge in reframing the Heartland Township website is to develop something that really focuses on a greater sense of usability and access, and overcomes one of the primary challenges it's facing right now, is that it's not very compatible with mobile devices. From that, we looked at a different part of the competitive landscape, and that is the personality breakdown of the other communities. So what are they saying in terms of Downtown Development Authority efforts, or any efforts specific to marketing the community? And those detailed here are, from left to right, we've got Brighton and their tagline, which is, "Don't miss out." Fenton says, "Fenton, be closer." Milford, "Meet me in Milford." Downtown Northville is timeless with a twist. And then probably the most successful up there would be Ann Arbor's, and their positioning of doing life different. So you can see that there's just a variety of language here used to communicate the overall personalities, a shorthand expression to their community, and that's what we're trying to do for Heartland. So the second part of the process was to conduct some research within the community to determine a list of criteria that's going to inform this new brand position. And we developed a survey that was introduced to the community through a series of focus groups, one-on-one, and then we converted that to an online forum that people were able to engage digitally, and that's where we really picked up some traction and got a lot of community input and feedback. The demographics of that survey were pretty broad, in that we had everyone from as young as 15 to 75-plus, with our median age was about 47. Total number of people that responded to the survey, I think Manager Wickman had mentioned this, we had nearly 100 people respond. 67 of those were female, 30 male. Average age, I had mentioned, was 47. And almost all the participants were originally from inside of Michigan. Part of the survey was to qualify whether or not they were original residents of Heartland Township, or if they had moved to the community, and then what were those reasons behind them choosing Heartland. Some of the key findings of those who relocated to Heartland, and the priorities that drove their decision, this was pretty universal, in that everybody responded to the schools. They either moved here for a work, for work or job reasons, or they moved here for their family. The overall atmosphere, the value they got for the homes, and then the lakes. Some of the most distinctive qualities that they noted were the people in the community, that it seemed like it was very family-oriented, there were a lot of sports activities, and again, the schools scored very highly in the survey. It had sort of a country feel, it wasn't overgrown, it had a historical aspect to it. So you can see that these are very strong in terms of their sense of community, which tended to be the single most distinctive quality that everybody noted, is a sense of community. There was a real, a real passion in the responses to the survey. The responses that we got were very specific, and really communicated a love and a sense of community and a feeling of Heartland that was really, really genuine. Part of the survey was to help identify a series of words that was going to become the basis for the criteria on how we measured the positioning against. And the list of words you can see here on the left, friendly, safe, casual, convenient, relaxed, laid-back, calm, progressive, private, remote, inclusive, and serious, these are scored from top to bottom, and the highest is the lowest. So you can see our top six there really talk to the inclusion and the sense of community that Heartland provides. So using those top six, this really became the list of criteria that we were going to measure all of the other efforts against. So as we developed some language and some word choices for the tagline and the positioning itself, we had to use this as a measure to make sure that the, we were communicating the right tone, and that we were really, were really lining the words and the statements we were crafting to match these six words. So we went through a series of explorations in tagline development, and anything from a variety of declarative statements, to everyday common language phrases and themes that people were familiar with, variety of word choices, and we really narrowed it down to a top two that people seemed to gravitate the most to. First one being livable, lovable, local. Now, we explored a couple of options on this particular theme of three words. This one seemed to be the most, that the most personality that people gravitated to was the most accessible in terms of the word choices. The words themselves were chosen very, very specifically to the criteria there on the left. It has a little bit of whimsy to it, it's easy to remember, it's easy to roll off the tongue, so to speak, and it really speaks to the individual partners that this was also presented to. And that livable, lovable, local seemed to meet everybody's, meet everybody's needs. The second choice was simply, "Your welcome." It really was the best shorthand and summary statement that was all-encompassing in the personality that came through and what people were trying to communicate in the survey, about how they really, really loved Heartland and what it had to offer. So after the tagline exercise, we moved into the development of symbolism, and how are we going to take everything that we distilled out of the survey and all of this data that we got back from the community, and really make that, pour all of that into a visual symbol? So in reviewing the research, it seemed that Heartland means so many things to so many different people, and as a result, we can't rely on a single image or idea that effectively resonates with everyone. One of the examples I like to use is, Heartland's not the type of community that has a downtown square or central square that might have had a clock from the 1800s, that had been there forever, and everybody in the community would really identify with that as a particular symbol. So that, if we had that to work with, that would easily be the symbol that would unify the community in a brand, or a logo or identifier. We don't have that. So in the absence of that, we had to look at other options, and how we can express all of the personality and the characteristics of the community in a symbol that people can pretty much take subjectively from it, all of the facets that were, that people responded So in the absence of having a single unifying element that everybody could identify with, we had to look at other options. So those really broke down into two categories, whether they were organic symbols, we've got farming and field elements that would have a historical context, we've got trees or a leaf which would communicate parks and recreation, we've got water and lake symbols that would represent geographic relevance or activities in the community. And again, all of these go back to the qualities of the community that people, that people responded in the survey. The non-organic elements would be something along the lines of an architectural style, again, with some historical context, or an architectural detail. Those didn't really have that great of a relevance, because there isn't a prevailing architectural style within the community, or something that we could visually hang our hat on, like, again, a downtown theme, or a downtown architect's style that people So with that said, that takes us to our first logo. Another thing I'd like to point out here is that in the survey, one element sort of surfaced that seemed to be undeniable. If you remember the survey questions, I believe you all saw the survey that was distributed, one of the questions asked was, if you saw a bumper sticker for Heartland, what would that say? And clearly, almost everyone who responded to that question had some form of using the word "heart." So the heart became a real symbol that people identified with. There was, "My heart is in Heartland." "Heartland is the heart of Michigan." "I heart Heartland." So pretty much everyone had that sort of recognition. So the use of that shape was pretty undeniable. That said, using a heart in a very literal sense really wouldn't give us the sophistication and the long-term shelf life in a symbol that I think we're really looking for. So we had to explore options of communicating that in a subtle way, more abstract, and as well as combine some of the organic elements previously mentioned. So you see, we had this logo here with the heart symbol, which is very abstract, we've got some organic elements that really speak to the parks and recreation aspect, and some of the other community items such as the lakes.
Did color play a major role as well?
Color seemed to be driven primarily by the elements that we chose. So if you're looking at organic elements, then naturally you kind of gravitate to the blues and the greens. But we, like I mentioned, this, this presentation is about 90% of the way, we're still sort of in a refinement phase, getting to a final logo, getting to a final tagline, and making those refinements to get additional color choices, which are being presented right now, but we're most of the way there. So I mentioned that this was also presented to the partners of the community, those being the schools, the library, and the Chamber of Commerce so far. And this was shown to really communicate that we're not just developing a symbol that is standalone, it's a symbol that really has to create a branding architecture that can be deconstructed or used in various ways, that can really support the various partners, but also give them an autonomy and an individuality to their own logos without being obtrusive or taking over their own identities. The concepts were then shown, how could this be adapted to the existing websites of those partners, with having some prominence on the page, but not, again, taking over or being obtrusive to their existing identities. This logo and its use on their websites would then create sort of a reciprocal relationship between the landing page that we're trying to develop, the portal, the portal that is going to allow people to gain access to these individual sites, sort of a two-way door that is going to serve the needs of the existing partner site, as well as this, the portal that we're developing, sort of a rising tide raises all ships concept. We also looked at ways of adapting this to other efforts. So we can take some of the elements from the logo itself and develop maybe Downtown Development Authority, or some efforts that are specific to an individual partner themselves, this being the Chamber of Commerce. The second finalist in our logo is a little bit more progressive. It has a broader use of color here. The heart symbol is still within this logo, but is much more abstract than it was in the first concept. But you can see the overall use of the organic elements is still there. The water is a little bit more prominent in this than it was in the previous, the previous option. So this really just takes us a little bit further in terms of being a more modern and Again, that was adapted to the individual partners to show how this could work within And then this direction was applied a little bit more prominently to the partner websites, but would, would in effect work the same way as the two-way doorway. This would be another option for exploring that deconstruction, or that application to other marketing efforts. This one is a little bit more literal, in that it uses the core logo in itself and just adds shop to it. So two different treatments on that particular theme. From there, we had to look at some website applications. This concept is the first idea for the landing page itself, and like I said, this is currently in a state of evolution. We're trying to define what the content of this page is, but essentially, it's designed as a portal, as I had mentioned before, where we're allowing a series of animated options at the top, which can be interchanged depending on the various marketing efforts of that particular partner. So this can be changed on a weekly or a monthly basis, or whatever initiative they happen to want to promote at any given time. And then below that, we would have more of a graphic grid, or sort of a business card type theme that can click through to the individual partner sites. We're also talking about maybe expanding this into sort of a tiered approach. So we have a tier one promotion at the top, and then tier two might be the graphics to the lower left, and then a third tier could be text listings, just depending on which one we want to focus on. Another feature of this landing page is going to be the consolidation of event calendars. And I think efforts are going to be made to get everybody using Google Calendar, so we can pull all of that in, so this becomes more of an aggregator for the entire community, sort of a one-stop-shop for all of the events that are going on. This next page illustrates one of the concepts in sort of cleaning up and reframing the Heartland Township website. We've got the existing one there on the left, and then this option on the right. This really follows some best practices in usability and interface design, so things are in common and known places where they're supposed to be, logo in the upper left, and a standard navigation structure. This is built around the concept of, it's a modular approach, very, very popular today in that it's called responsive design, in that all of the elements in the page will really reframe and reshape themselves depending on the device. So nothing is in a fixed place, and it's built in a way that optimizes the view and the user experience across mobile devices, desktops, laptops, what have you. So depending on what view you're looking at, you can turn it, and everything's going to shape and be easy to navigate regardless of the device. This is the second option. So you can see that the elements are pretty much the same, but it's just a different, a different position and a different promotion level of priority from upper left to lower and a different promotion level of priority from upper left to lower right. That's pretty much it for right now.
Thank you, Curtis. If you could go back to those, the two logos.
Sure.
And for the board, there is, I think I mentioned earlier, there is one, one of the logos and one of the taglines is garnering broader support in our focus groups and with the partners, and that is the first logo there combined with the tagline of "You're welcome." And so we didn't want to keep the other ideas that we had narrowed it down to from the board, and we'd certainly be interested in hearing thoughts that the board has about strengths of them, or if they feel strongly for or against any of the, either the logos or the taglines. That's what we're here for discussion on, if the board has any thoughts.
Between the two logos, I definitely have a preference towards the first one here.
Me too.
The other one makes me think of a dinosaur.
It does.
What did you say?
A peacock.
What did you say?
It said that second one makes me think of a dinosaur. I don't know which type of dinosaur.
Made me think of a bird with a tail.
Is there a consensus towards this one? Or any thoughts to the contrary?
I agree with, well, consensus, I do prefer this one over the second one in terms, I thought the other one was a little fizzier, especially if you're going to add concepts to it, like shop, Heartland, or whatever. Do you like that one? I'm not sure, it may take me a little bit to grow on the "You're welcome."
Yeah, I don't like that either.
I don't.
Are we married to either one of them? I mean, could we come up with something?
Well, I have a couple of questions. You said the focus group seemed to lean more towards the "You're welcome."
Yeah, when we started, I don't know, did we have 12 or 14 of these when we first looked at them and sort of narrowed it down to the couple, working with the partners? It was, the "You're welcome" resonated for some of their applications, with the schools and Chamber in particular. And there was even in testing it with other individuals, the "Lovable, lovable, local" for some reason, and I'm not, I don't know why, the "lovable" part seemed over the top for some folks. And that, and, you know.
Likeable?
Enough.
Another word.
We certainly went through that whole thought process, and really, enough people said it that we sort of had to pay attention, because really, I mean, if you imagine seeing it for the first time, or if it's on a billboard, that knee-jerk reaction is what, you know, if enough people say it, then you start to wonder who else is going to think that too. And so, and believe me, there are other thoughts that, you know, aren't so warm and fuzzy about the "You're welcome" either. And so, the challenge here that may be a big hairy audacious goal is to find a brand that resonates and works for all the partners and all the applications, because if it were just the township trying to promote itself, it would probably be easier. But we're trying to recognize that in order to maximize and optimize, you know, putting the brand in front of people, that has to be something that they're willing to promote, that when the schools do a billboard for schools of choice, or do their marketing for schools of choice, that they're willing to tag this on the end of it to raise the level of recognition of the brand. That when the Chamber of Commerce or an individual business is doing their advertising, that they are willing to associate themselves with the brand. And again, the more that that brand is out there, the more that its prominence is raised. And so, it's a very delicate balance, and there's no easy answers. So that would be a question, is it, you know, not only, you know, what you favor, but if it's one that is just a definite no, or we can't rally behind, you know, we need to know that too. And if we need to, if we're barking up the wrong tree, that's the kind of feedback we're looking for. We didn't necessarily hear anything from the partners that said that, if you pick one or the other, you know, forget about it. Everybody's been very collegial in these conversations, but.
"You're welcome" to me is like, we're done with you.
Yeah.
The other one was at least like attractive, like we're trying to draw you in, you know, so I really do not like "You're welcome," which just doesn't fit with me.
You can look at it a couple of ways, because I initially had that same reaction, that I thought, well, you're welcome, welcome to come here.
Right.
I mean, there's another perspective, you know, so I initially had your reaction when I saw that, and all that, I feel like saying, thank you, Heartland, you're welcome, you know? So, you know. But, I mean, I certainly, of the two.
Is there some consensus around the "Lovable, lovable, local" though, and that would be a preference, or is there?
Yeah, and maybe change the word "lovable" if that doesn't, if that's the word that's holding it all up.
Ugly?
Lively?
When you showed it to the other partners, did you just show them those two?
Yeah, most of them only just saw those two, yeah.
It's hard for me to sit up here, really, and kind of, I need a little more time to kind of think about the two that have been approached, but again, it's without looking at some of the other examples, or perhaps, you know, that's kind of how I look at it. I'm going to come at it from different angles until I come to.
What was the three-word W one?
It was a C one.
Oh, C. What was?
Convenient.
Forget off the top of my head.
Comfortable, convenient, something.
Yeah, comfortable, convenient.
It was a mouthful.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were longer words, and the words didn't have the warmth.
Right.
That the other version had, that's why we discarded it.
So I certainly appreciate that, and if you have additional thoughts after tonight's meeting, please do keep those thoughts coming. At the same time, we were also interested in that immediate reaction too, because that is where most people are going to see it, and we want to see what kind of impact that has, if it doesn't good or bad or indifferent, so.
But you mentioned that when the Chamber and the schools sort of, like, or who indicated that they preferred the "You're welcome" slogan?
The Chamber and the schools preferred that one. Now, we did have, we tried to focus it with a couple of different businesses, and we had different responses, and some were strong on both sides too.
Yeah, I'd be curious, because the businesses, we want to encourage them to kind of.
Yeah.
Put this into their.
Right.
Their own branding.
And that's where we leaned more towards the finding one that does resonate such way. Because, I mean, admittedly, the township, we've talked, and at least early on, we've not said that we're going to spend a lot of money behind promoting the brand. I mean, I think we will want to have some conversation about what we might put in the budget for that, but we haven't said we're going to do any sort of major campaign of billboards and magazine ads and all that stuff. So since we may not be the one that does the most promotion of it, that's why we valued their input.
Certainly.
A little heavier.
What about something like a welcoming community? I guess it portrays the idea that we came up with second. You know, I suppose your first reaction is to, you know, it's like, be done with it.
Dismissed.
A dismissive reaction, a welcoming community. Just throwing that out there, that they might have welcoming, a welcoming.
Well, certainly, I think we got some good feedback tonight to kind of put our heads together on it and try to come up with any further thoughts that might balance everybody's interests. Not trying to wordsmith it tonight, but if you keep that feedback coming, appreciate it.
Well, the other thing further I'd like to say is, you know, everything I've read about branding, it is important to get everybody on in support of it.
Yes.
So keep that in mind.
And the township included. And I'm not, and then what I'll make clear is that I think we do need to have some more conversations about maybe coming up with some other treatments of that idea. I don't know what they are, well, without, and we have, there are other folks that we've talked to that have similar reservations about it. We're not going to make everybody happy. Suffice to say, with every branding campaign that I've seen happen in every other community, you always have people who don't like it, and some may even, you know, take to, you know, Facebook or whatever means to say that they don't like it, because it doesn't capture or doesn't touch them, that's inevitable, and so we certainly recognize that impossibility. But we do want to try to find something that speaks to the most people.
Okay, well, if there's nothing more on that.
You're good? Yes, thank you.
To Memorial Committee Proposal, and I believe this is Trustee Trichy.
The committee did have a couple of meetings since our last board meeting, and the project is very important to a lot of residents, as you quite imagine. Instead of a single memorial like we see in any other municipal parks, the committee chose that they would like to incorporate different areas of honor that would contribute to the meaning of Settlers Park. This area of honor would have a place in it for our men and women who have served in the armed forces. It would have an area for the men and women who serve in public safety. There would be a section to honor the pioneers of the past and the innovators for the future. So it would incorporate a lot of things, and what we, what our first objective is, is to, is to apply and obtain this grant that is available. So we want to develop the armed forces area of this particular project. So this project would be a phase or a project within a project of a larger scale. And keep in mind that the grant would only be a start, so we would be needing more donations, and as we get a better handle on the cost estimates, we're going to need some companies to help pitch in and to develop this area. The township knows that they're going to need help from other organizations within our township, but our goal is to turn this into a community project that we can all be proud of. So I'd like to have Robert West, our Public Works Director, and Gary Cornell come to the table, and they can describe what the committee has come up with, that we are going to submit for the grant. And Bob, if you can explain where this is going to be in the park, that would probably be a good start. And we'll go from there.
Good evening. The location of this proposed memorial would be basically northwest of the existing township hall, the first curve of the loop. I apologize, I don't have a map with me this evening, but it would essentially be just outside Township Hall. If you were in the Settlers Park parking lot, if you were facing west.
I would go here if you wanted.
Yeah, that would probably work perfect. You see, the existing township hall is located here. This aerial image obviously is pre-Settlers Park development because it still shows the barns and the structures on the site, but the pathway is the actual GPSed pathway that does exist on the park. And what we would be looking for is a location basically in this corner, just by this turn right here, inside of that.
Can you all put the picture back up there?
Absolutely.
Was that, is that where the, at one time, we had a baseball diamond?
No.
No, it's not.
Baseball diamond was more behind the hall. This one's right at that curve, you can see it from.
Okay. I think I know.
It's kind of where we were when we had the dedication.
Right, okay.
Gary, I'd like you to explain what you've come up with, and I got to tell you, you know, and don't be humble here, but you know what, I'll tell you what. You know, Gary had does a lot of work for this township, and he needs recognition for that, and he put together this plan for us, he's got the site plan available, and, you know, just thank you very much, Gary, on behalf of the whole township. You do an awful lot for this township, and people don't know that, and they need to know that.
Well, thank you, Bob. Not the reason to do those things. But this plan, as Joe stated, we had a couple of meetings, and we had several people on, lots of, lots of ideas and discussion about the location, and the agreed-upon approach was to have something that, you know, was strong enough in form and impact from even the road that it would be a feature to the park, and that, you know, people would have some connection with it even if they weren't interacting with it directly. And while trying to meet the different objectives that Joe explained, not to get too carried away in the complexity of the elements in the park, so, or in the memorial. And originally, the thinking was to use a part of the park that had a slope so that it faced the road, and really, this location, Larry Hopkins was most influential in directing me toward, and what you're looking at is a view, and I'm going to just switch quickly to the site plan itself, and I'm not sure how well you can see that, I believe you have in your board packet a copy of this, but this is the curve of the path that Bob had mentioned, so that kind of gives you the orientation of where the, where the site is. And normally, I like to design things with the site location in mind. I had actually kind of come up with this scheme, and then, and the idea was that it would set on a gentle slope, and it just happened that this location, Larry's perception was pretty good about the adaptability of this corner of the site to it. And the lines that you see on the drawing are the actual contour lines from, I think, the GPS topography that's been done on the site. And so, the overall kind of organization of it is, everything is kind of organized within this circle of trees, something that's a regular planting, and is kind of all-encompassing to the other elements of the memorial. And the memorial is in essence kind of built into the hill. What you're looking at, as you look at these contour lines, is gently rising grade from east to west. And the largest circle to the left or to the west on the drawing would be the area where there would be. where there would be honoring of, of the military and of the veterans. And the points that are kind of on the high-shaped sectors of that, that circle are where the flags of the five services would be, and then a wall that would act as a retaining wall in a place for placement of dedication plaques or some type of treatment of the wall would act as a small retaining wall, but not so high that it would require railings or whatever. So kind of worked with a three and a half foot maximum for retaining wall that precludes the, the need for, for railings on it. So that would kind of be set into the, into the land there. The center of the, of the large circle is some type of monument element. I'll still discuss the idea that it could be perhaps even a, like a sundial element. And the kind of triangular shape in the, in the center uses parts of, of the other elements to kind of organize the three circles together with a large flag pole somewhere in the order of about 60 foot in the center, a planting area around that, and then the monument device, and then a bench kind of planter here. This other wall area would again be a retaining wall, but a little bit higher and be a display wall where kind of telling the story of Heartland and the founding fathers could be done. And then this area here is the circle, which would have an even lower wall that would act as a bench to these two other areas and could have a place to recognize public servants and people that have contributed to the township with kind of a lawn and the forecourt of the whole arrangement where activities could take place or somebody could kind of sit and contemplate the, the flags and the elements that are in the memorial. And then the walkway is just tied in to allow for kind of a, an easy access to the memorial and a gradation which would not require ramps or anything, where a one and, a 5% maximum slope would be possible, which means that you can basically negotiate that without the need for handrails and so forth. So returning to the, to the sketch here that was done, you can see the large flag pole in the center, the triangular kind of planting area, and the lower lawn area in the front, the area dedicated to the Veterans Memorial with the, with the flags for the services. And then over here, the larger wall kind of gets taller towards the center that would be perhaps something of a different material, possibly even wood or something, where there was the ability to kind of change displays and so forth. So when you try to tell, tell a story with displays that, that use photography or use text, there's a need sometimes to freshen those, and it's, you know, it's difficult to put something that, that stays forever. So it'd give perhaps the ability to tell different parts of Heartland's story, which most of us are aware that there's, there's a lot to tell about Heartland's history that very often new members of the community don't hear about for long periods of time. Then in the background, you see the kind of regular planting organization of the trees that were shown on the plan, and then in the background, the, the natural trees along the old fence line in the, the site in general. So I think that, as quickly as I can, kind of goes over it. Be glad to ask any questions if I can.
So for tonight, we're, we'd be looking for some consensus on the concept of that, you know, again, just are we moving in the right direction with this thought and idea? And then the more immediate issue is with the grant. Assuming we have consensus on that, we'd be looking to make an application for the grant before the end of the month, and that is a grant up to $25,000. And then another question I would have for the board in that vein is then we would like to be able to, so certainly build out of this. We don't have a number on, as it's, it'll be a fairly large number, you can guess that. For the grant purposes, we wouldn't be going after the grant for full build out. We'd be looking at a phased approach, one where the first phase would be the centerpiece, and one where that first phase could stand alone for a period of time, or would look natural by itself as a standalone centerpiece with a flag pole and whatnot. Until such time as enough fundraising or other grant opportunities could build out other phases. So the grant would be focused on getting the ball rolling, getting that centerpiece in there, getting probably some electrical if we can make that fit. And then for that purpose, going after the $25,000 grant, we would like to be able to commit to matching that from the township. So that would be a question for the board, is if, if there's consensus on the concept, is there consensus around the idea of budgeting for potential match to a grant to get that first phase in? So those questions that we would have for the board's discussion.
Do you have anything to add to that, Bob?
Not at this time. The preliminary estimates on cost materials just has not been able to, we won't have an, we weren't unable to have in time for this meeting. So we're working on it, but.
You're working on it for the application, but we just didn't have ready for this meeting.
Yes. The grant application, I, I would like to have that, and I will have that as part of it. It's just, yeah, we were somewhat delayed and we're under a strict deadline, and so we're, we're doing the best we can right now. As far as making it to this meeting with those costs, it wasn't going to happen, but we will have them. I anticipate probably having them within, I would hope to have them within next week.
So I had a question, I guess, for Gary.
Sure.
So as I've said at the committee meetings, my concern is that when a first phase is done, that it's something that can stand there on its own. And if we're concentrating on that triangle, it seems to me there's probably about three different types of ways that's formed. Part of it seems to be a planted area, part of it is a raised wall that's a bench or a sitting area, part of it seems to be flat concrete, maybe. And particularly, the flat concrete is part of a larger area of flat concrete. I mean, is it, is it really possible to do that? I mean, or would you put the triangle in in a different medium than when you're going to do the bigger circle, convert that to the flat concrete, or?
I think there's a lot of possibilities, Larry. I won't kid you, I've spent a great deal of time kind of looking at that. I believe that there's a lot of possibilities depending, you know, the primary cost items would be, would be those walls, probably perhaps even more than the, the two larger circles, you know, would have some type of hard surface paving. The most economical would be, you know, concrete, but it could be other things. And then the flag poles themselves, which, you know, have a kind of a fixed cost that, or initial cost that has, you know, significant impact. But I, I think there are a lot of different options depending on how much money is available at what time, and, you know, certain plantings and things like that can be done early on. And, you know, the landscape architect once told me, says, the work we do as designers gets better as time goes on. The work that architects do usually gets worse as time goes on. But I think there's just a lot of, you know, a lot of different options depending on the resources that are available. So you certainly could make small commitments in the way of landscaping or something that might be changed as it's, you know, as it's further developed.
Well, three of us are on the committee, so it's really Glenn and Joe. See your comments.
Well, it's impressive.
I think it's important that when we submit the grant, that the township shows that they are going to contribute to this project as well. I think that'd be an important part of getting the grant.
Can we do that?
Well, actually, we, it would be a capital improvement, we would show it as probably, I would think, why not?
Yeah, right. That would be a question, yes, we can, and I would concur, that's, that's grants 101. If you want to maximize the impact of your application, have some match dollars there. So, and the subject, everything about this, certainly with all the grants I've ever been involved with, I have a good feeling about our possibilities with it, just to do that first phase. But, so if there's a consensus on the concept and moving forward with it, and then would the board entertain matching the grant funds if that, if we were awarded that?
Yeah, I'm.
I don't need a mo, don't need a motion, I just need to know that we're, we're not barking up the wrong trees, all.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
And I like the concept. I think it's impressive. I think captures a lot of the elements that I think Joe had been talking about for a while now.
Well, we're putting this into a passive park where people can go and walk, relax, sit and think, and this fits right in with that. It does, it's not a monument kind of memorial, it's more of a place where you can just go and sit and relax and read if you want to, or, but it would, I think it's, it fits right into what we're doing in the park itself.
So I think that gives you what you need?
I think so. I think it would, do we need a motion on that?
We don't. We can, we'll finish putting together the grant package. As we get more information, we get some of those cost estimates, we'll certainly share those with the board, and we'll have to talk about, you know, potential budgeting for the match if we were awarded the grant.
Yeah, that would be in next year's budget.
Uh, yes, yes. It would be, I think the grant parameters is the money's do have to be spent next year, am I, yeah, so.
Very nice design, Gary.
Good job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is retreat debriefing.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This agenda item was on the last agenda, and I don't know that I adequately paused to make sure that there weren't any further thoughts, and wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to, to pause and consider that because we ended up going down a rabbit trail, was an important one, but may have detracted from my initial purpose of, of putting this on the agenda, which was to just free to review Dr. Bender's raw notes from the retreat, and as the staff is diving into building a strategic plan around that and bringing that strategic plan back to the board to look at, just wanted to see if the board had any further thoughts, you know, coming from their tree after their treat, anything that we're missing, or any revisions you would make to make sure those, if there are any, we can incorporate those into the first draft of the strategic plan that we bring back to you. So that's the purpose for this, and why I had it in there last time, but wanted to make sure that adequately allowed for the board to contemplate that. Not telling you that there should be, or that there need, that there need be, but wanted to make sure the board had another opportunity to give that feedback if you had any. Otherwise, we'll continue plugging along and have something back to you within the month.
So James, you've looked over these notes from Dr. Bender?
Yes.
And your feeling is that he captured, I mean, there was a couple of things that kind of seemed to me to be more of background discussion that are in here that, just because they're in here makes them feel like they're equal to the thing next to them, and I just wondered about.
Yeah, these are, like I call them the raw notes, so I didn't try to editorialize or commentate. They're our, I, I can read through those as well, and we'll do, be doing that when we actually make application to what then becomes a specific measurable time-based task to be done. Having been there, I know what the context of some of those notations are.
Well, interesting, you know, I'm just sitting here thinking about it in light of the branding discussion. That's not part of this strategic planning?
It's, it is included. It is just a minor bullet point, but it's not called out as much as it probably ought to. It's actually under the last one on the community development, the last bullet point on the fifth page of Continue With The Branding.
But I think we recognize that, that leading, that we're already involved in it.
What does that mean? That's to be determined. We'll be, we'll be coming up with some suggested action plans for next year for implementation of the branding, and we can talk about that.
And then the community quality of life, we touched on it, but it's not called out on this too much about looking at particular events, like an event, as, you know, we, you know, Hallow has a melon festival, and Potterville has a bear, and Brighton has multiple, you know, events. Heartland has Heritage Days, it has the Memorial Day Parade, and how that, maybe we can look at improving those in some way.
So I don't know, I don't recall that the board corporately talked about that at the retreat. There may have been some individual.
There was some.
Discussion. But certainly, if there's some board consensus about trying to include that in the, whether it be the five-year vision, or specifically for next year, if there's some, some tasks that the board would like to tackle in that regard, is that, you have something in mind, or?
Only, you know, I, I just think that those are, are community events that bring community together, or Memorial, or Memorial Day Parade is usually the big one. But typically, people come to that parade and then they go away. I mean, they go to their.
The issue of events has been, certainly in my conversations with community organizations from the beginning, is that I am surprised at the size of our community, we don't have more of them.
Right, right.
What I also know about community events is they only work through volunteerism grassroots. If the township put on a event, it'd be a pretty horrible event. I mean, it really works through the community, rallying around ideas or taking.
Or, and they usually have your chambers.
And we have, volunteerism is, is, is not very strong. If you recall, that was even part of our survey. Our, one of the very few areas where we benchmarked lower than average was in volunteerism. And that's a function of long commutes and active lifestyles and kids and all sorts of things, that's understandable. Until we have more balance there, the idea of, of having more events is difficult to imagine. Doesn't mean that the township couldn't play a more active role in trying to facilitate those without getting in the way of it, but if that's in interest of the board, certainly let me know if that should be included in this.
Hopefully, maybe our, in the vision way out there, this park becomes a place where we can hold bigger events, because as a person who's been in Heartland a long time, remember downtown when we had the parade and the chicken barbecue, and the whole town stayed downtown, all 4,000 of us? You know, now it's 15,000, and where do you host something that you start building a reputation?
I'm glad you brought up the chicken.
Yeah, the fireman.
That, that's been brought to my attention years ago, that, that was a, a regular practice, and people looked forward to it, and I don't know what, why it faded away, but.
There was no room, because they used to grill it right there in Upli Park, you know, and, right, Joe?
I think, I think that if we're talking about lovable, lovable, local, that's potential, right? Those are the kinds of things that I think that bring community together, and our focus groups did, I think, as you've indicated, or maybe you indicated just simply that you're surprised we don't have more of them in the people that we talk to. So, somewhere in this strategic plan, we may need to, as a bullet point, let's say, to add that. That's just my opinion. I don't know what the other board, rest of the board feels like.
Well, I mean, I think that I'm not alone in supporting what you're saying. I know when I originally ran, to be on the board, you know, that was one of the things that I thought, you know, we were lacking, you know, why do you always have to go to Howell or to Brighton to enjoy some of those types of things? I think this park gives us some opportunities that in the future, we might be able to host something. But I also recognize what James says, it does take people other than the seven of us here, and the another 12 or 14 people who work in the office, to put something like that together. I know I saw Dick's article in the, in the community council recently about Memorial Day Parade, and trying to bolster some volunteers to organize that again. And being part of that group, I do see that, you know, it really is put on with a very skeleton amount of people, and we're always trying to reach out, I mean, as you guys have, will be mentioned here for the last few years, as we're leading up to that. And we don't get a whole lot of people joining in to help out on that, and it's difficult to put on those kind of things without that grassroots group that's going to champion it. But I do support the idea of moving towards it, anything we can do, I would support.
And small, you know, it's all baby steps, it starts somewhere. Even the Chambers Carnival, whether you were a fan of it or not, was successful by all accounts, and they're looking at doing it again next year, and that could provide opportunities to build on that as well. And that's how they start, it starts with one thing. But, you know, we can, does the board feel that they want to make that a part of its vision, or that we want to try to take some actionable steps next year to play a more active role in those things, or...
Well, I mean, is there, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to say, going forward, where would you see more discussions on this strategic plan, or in taking...
Well, it would be the first draft of showing a real outline of an action plan. I mean, measurable, time-based tasks that we would be committing to for next year, that would drive our budget decision-making, would drive allocation of staff resources. We'd have, it'd look very similar to the last one, I think, a little bit more user-friendly, of identifying specific milestones, moving toward what we would do in the next year or two, to move towards that five-year vision. And then, the board, you know, it'd be for the board's review, and if you wanted to add or revise it some way, you'd have that discussion.
And, I mean, if we were going to get involved in this aspect, what would you see being something that, it almost seems to me like we have to have a discussion of the whole again, to see what that would be.
I hadn't really contemplated, but, I mean, we could, yeah, even, there are small steps that we could take, even in our communication efforts, of us also trying to carry that banner of encouraging volunteerism and trying to recruit on behalf of, it would be, yeah, I don't, I'd have to think that through, haven't really thought it through until the idea was brought up tonight. Just because in the past, it's not, not trying to be defeatist about it, just acknowledging that really the only way these things work is through the volunteer efforts, and if there's not a, if you don't have that critical mass of people to carry the load, just becomes untenable. So I just have taken maybe more of a passive position of imagining that hopefully eventually our community, as we rally around a brand, or try to, again, deepen the roots of that sense of place that we have, that we would see more of that grow. Or that the things that we have going now, that, you know, potentially even this, the Chamber Carnival could, you know, start to evolve into something bigger, or offer a wider variety of events. I just know those things take time, too. And if the board is, really wants to make it an important piece of its strategic plan, we can certainly brainstorm a number of other ideas to be more active in trying to promote that. We can make it more of a priority.
Well, the only thing, I don't mean to keep on monopolizing this, I mean, we've made a lot of decisions to try and put ourselves out there a little more, make ourselves identifiable. I mean, we started doing newsletters, we're doing the branding. I think we need to position ourselves to, if we're successful in those initiatives, to take advantage of that increased, I don't know if connectivity is the right word, but the connection we've created with the community members, I could see it helping Hero in fundraising opportunities and things like that, if we get, if we build that up, and I think we should be in a position, and in this strategic plan, to be prepared to capitalize if we see, you know, progress from these initiatives that we've taken. I don't know if that's, you know, in line with what Joe's thinking or not.
If there's no objection, we can add the thought to the outline, and try to come up with some thoughts, and then we can have some more discussion when we bring back a draft to you. Thanks.
Unless there's anything else, or it looks like we're to the end.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, aye. We are adjourned.
Yeah, okay.